Good afternoon. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to order. I'd like to start with roll call Shannon Rubin.
Here.
Mary La Duke.
Here.
Can you hear us okay, Mary? Are you able to hear us okay?
Huh?
Are you able to hear us okay?
I can't hear. I heard you better. Now I can barely hear you.
Okay. What about now?
Very good.
Okay, well, we'll keep the volume up for you.
Thank you.
George Lee.
Here.
And I'd like to, well, someone there can motion to excuse Pat Frumstead if he had a family situation arise.
Motion that we excuse Pat Frumstead.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming here today. We had a lot of applications this year for LTAC. Working on a system that is more user-friendly for the board because of eighteen applicants and all the different organizations and so we, I want to first say thank you for working with us and apologize for doing things a little differently this year. We asked some folks back because we had some questions. We had financial and we also had some specific questions about events you might actually post. And so Mary's on Zoom. She's one of our board members and we have Shannon and George with us today. So what I'd like to start off this meeting with, because we do have people online, is today's a day that I'd like to hear from, we would like to hear from the general public. So if there's any public comment about, any input you'd like to have with us or what you saw before or what you would like to talk about now, please step forward.
You want to do online first?
Let's do online first.
Okay. Does anybody online have a public comment? Susan Connery?
No, thank you for asking.
Kristin?
I have just a brief comment about some of the data that I've run recently. It looks like from 2023 to three hundred and sixty-four days back from today's date, there was an uptick in the other cities down the coast from Long Beach all the way down into Oregon. And some of those, most of those were due to the fact that they had signed a couple of new citywides back in 2023 that have now actualized. And most of that also, there's a tremendous economic potential of tourism in Ocean Shores for mice travel, being the most seeked after. If you're not in tourism and don't know what mice means, it's an acronym for meetings, incentives, conferences, and exhibitions. So with that being said, there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, missed opportunity that can be and needs to be had and captured by our city that is actually going away to other cities that I don't know who is aware of that or how to capture it. I also don't know who is prospecting for our city, but just having, just running numbers and having six to eight solid citywise per, silly, citywise per year and just one-offs for the rest of the year. With just that alone, our city would thrive and continue to thrive in just keeping our pipeline, some business in the pipeline moving forward, but it's the new business you're over here that needs to be had. So, but anyways, if anybody's interested in those numbers, I have them and recently just ran them. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Rawlings, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. This is the first opportunity I've had to speak about this. I'm glad that the meeting that the LTAC had before went through and, and did some boundaries, made some very good changes, and I appreciate that. I just felt like it was a little bit confusing because it was not stated on the agenda that it was going to be culling some of the applicants and that I hope that that's a one-time thing. But Shannon's been a welcome breath of fresh air on getting the guidelines and boundaries. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Debbie B., do you have a public comment? Don Williams, do you have a public comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to echo the previous commenter that I think this has probably been a very, very, very much improvement in the thoroughness of the, of the review of the applicants with especially with a focus on, on what is the best use of the convention center in terms of, of asking about whether these events are shoulder events or, or weekend events or a one-day event that takes the entire, will kill the entire weekend. So I think you're, I think the committee's doing a great job. What I don't see in this agenda or anywhere else is what the basis is for the $245,000 being available. Every other agenda has always had a financial statement that shows where it came from. This is not fair. And I was wondering, maybe the chairman could comment on that. Do you know, do you know, have you seen any financials that justify the 245,000? And I've heard at the last meeting and since the last meeting that the hotel motel occupancy rate is, is going down. And I've heard that several different times in different places. And I'm wondering if this $245,000 is still the objective. And I'd like to hear that comment too. Otherwise, thank you very much. I think you're doing a great job. It's much more thorough this year than before. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jane Schadet, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I just want to, to ditto what Don Williams and Gina said. I think I really like this new process. I think it's flowing a lot better and is very productive. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the room have a public comment? Don't all rush the stage. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can I make the comment?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to address something that was said about the, going through the applications before in the other meeting. That is, it's a little overwhelming to get as many applications as we got. And I felt and I requested to be able to have some discussion about them so that this wasn't a five-hour meeting. And so I wanted to clarify the intent behind that. So because I thought that there was some things that we could discuss to kind of tailor this down. And the other thing I want to be abundantly clear of why, while I'm on the LTAC board, is that I really feel like processes need to be enhanced and we need to really, as the commenters spoke, focus on heads and beds in non-summertime. And I know none of you know who Kristin is, but Kristin works for a company that does meetings and events. And so she has access to data that pulls other areas. And so I had asked for that information before this meeting. So I appreciate her sharing that. I think for everyone listening, when you're doing an event, you need to think about how, if you're asking for money, how it's going to maximize heads and beds. And again, I want to beat a dead horse and say that I would like to see everyone that is asking for money for an event go to every single hotel and ask for the actual data that shows your event put a head in a bed. And if someone refuses, you know, jot that down, they refused, whatever, but collect it from the hotels that will give it to you. I am happy to collect it. I know David at the Gregel has said multiple times he will collect it. And if we're the only two collecting it, that's fine. You know, if you can't get it from anyone else, that's fine. But you need to have hard data as to heads and beds and not tickers at an event on a holiday weekend. It's not, it's not an accurate portrayal of a head in a bed.
George, you have anything up ahead? Barrett, do you have anything you'd like to comment on right now?
Nope.
Okay. And I'll, I'll follow up with Shannon's comments too. This is all, every year it's a work in progress. And the difference between today and even five years ago is that George has the convention center full. It might not necessarily be maximized yet, but it's hard for him to pull a weekend out right now. And so that's the good news. But he knows and is still working on ways of maximizing the convention center's use. And we are balancing the heads and beds with experience that when those tourists are here, what is this town doing that's helping their stay be more enjoyable? Are the, are the, are the parents enjoying themselves? Are the family members that are with them enjoying themselves? It'll make them want to come back and rebook those hotel rooms. So it is a balancing act. And we're working through all the processes to help make it better. I know that our applications aren't exactly intuitive and we will work on that also this, this coming few months so that the real process that happens in the fall is even easier to follow or to work with us for applications than it is now. So one step at a time. And thanks for everybody's patience. And I, I realize that we put in a, a stack, people that we wanted to invite back, answer questions. It wasn't as though officially, folks that we didn't send out an invite to have been absolutely point-blank turned down. Today's the day that the committee's going to decide how the funds are spent. So nothing official has been done yet, but the folks that are in the room today, we wanted some extra info from the folks that we didn't ask to come today. Their applications were self-explanated and we don't, again, need to have a ten-hour meeting. Unfortunately, we've got about $245,000 to spend. The way we came up with that money is finance department did push out a report. I thought that it had been somewhere in the past, but maybe that's my fault. They had recommended about $347,000 might be available this round. The problem is that, yes, we are having a hiccup in the reservations and the occupancy rates and we needed to be conservative. And so I went back to finance department and said, how about we rework this? Give me a real number, something that we're saying, because again, this is the, the extra. The real LTAC event is in the fall. And so when they redid their numbers, they came up with a number of 245,000 that they were very comfortable was real, even though we've had a downtick in occupancy rates in our hotels. So that, that's where we came up with the, the funds. Anything else, guys? Should we just get right into it? I was just going to pull out each application that we had asked for more information from and, and ask them to come up and talk a little bit about their event sort of to answer questions. Is that, does that work? So I was going to start with the BMW post and Mr. Harris. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
So I will start off with, and I think I spoke to you on the phone, obviously, about the, the application process. And one of the things that we were looking forward to, have seat if you want to make yourself a table.
Thank you.
Is we want to, the committee tends to want to kickstart and have seat money for all kinds of different things. And the hope is that, the hope is that over time that those events grow into a position where they're self-sustaining, but they need some help in the infancy. And so when you had turned in some financial paperwork, it, it didn't really say if that last tournament was very successful. It said, hey, you had contributed some too to pay all the bills. But we didn't really know if the sales of all of the things were, were positive enough to where you actually had money left in your hand to be able to help subsidize the next tournament.
Right.
So that was one of the questions for sure. Do you want to talk a little bit about that before we field other questions?
I have the 2023 golf scramble, veteran of all, can we print out here for your board? Okay, as you see, it's basically divided up into three columns. The total income was $18,411.29. The expenses came out to $16,502.50. The balance, or the profit, if you will, was $1,909.49. What we did with that was we rolled it into a prudent reserve for this year's golf tournament. Because we were going to have similar expenses, except for we are going to be raffling off a golf cart. And the golf cart we purchased for the raffle locally and that's a $5,500 item. $5,500 item. Is there anything else that the board would like to see?
Would you like to ask any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment.
Go ahead.
In light of looking at one of the line items, the expense was a $6,000 scholarship. So really, if that hadn't been gifted away, they would have been much more profitable. So I do want to point that out. And that's helping, I'm assuming, the children of Ocean Shores?
Ocean Shore in North Beach, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that too. You also had one for $8,956 for the relief fund.
Right.
So that was something that you were able to retain for the, for the post for emergencies.
That's correct.
Right.
So it looks like about $9,000. So, you know, about a $10,900 net to that event. So that's, that's great.
Yeah. We expect to do a lot better this year, both the golf carts. And we're going to be able to gift for each park three hole is going to have a prize for a hole in one. There will be two prizes for $10,000. This is gained by an insurance policy that we take out. The other three park threes are going to have similar prizes, but not $10,000. And we were able to secure that with the provider, which is Pacific Golf Enterprises out of Florida for nothing. They threw it in.
Nice. Good job. George, anything? Mary, do you have any questions for that?
No.
Okay. This is perfect. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So answered all, I think, our questions and great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So is Joseph Mays in? Joseph, welcome.
Thank you.
Pull up chair if you'd like to. So Hyatt alumni reunion is the 100th anniversary of the school's on the North Beach. And you're pulling people in from all parts of the, all parts of the area to get it back to.
Thank you. Yes.
Ocean Shores and.
This is one of the informal events, all the way back to the 1970s. I think early 1980s. For a long time, we actually helped in the Pacific Beach Naval Station before the event hall spurred down. They didn't rebuild it. So we had a principal who came in in that time, things like Duffy and very instrumental in getting students out and actually took students all over the country with all kinds of programs. And he retained his connection to the school even after he was no longer the principal there. And that was the genesis behind all of this. For many years, it was one of a, just kind of a volunteer, let's get everything together organization. Mike became very ill a couple of years ago and I helped him get the one-off, the 2021. And that's the one that, that I've left in finance and court here. The event we had that, that year, if you remember 2021, that was our first year that we were taking our masks off again, at least most of the time. So we were very happy to get 193-person nights there. We actually, on the food itself and on the rental, and I'm not going to say he gave us a break, but I think there was a COVID factor built in, we had a thousand-dollar rental, so that we can. And with that, we were able to make $494 net on the lower right-hand side on the food and rental itself. In addition to that, we had silent auction, had a lot of support from Jim Donahoe, getting things together for that. And we made another $35,000 on silent auction. So with that money, we went this year, over the last year and a half, and went legal. We went with TFL. We've got our UBI, we've got our 501(c)(3) and all the things that make this a more permanent event for us now. But that's also so, took $2,000 because the money just to keep warriors happy and saving beds. So this is the first year we're really approaching it as a legitimate operation, you know, with, with all the stakeholders in. For everybody who's got one of these, since the meeting on the eighth, when George was talking about that, we only had one night reserved. We, we did have one night reserved because we weren't sure how much money we had, but we always had with you the, the understanding that we had right of virtue code on the second night. I executed that last week while you were gone. If you look at what's happened since then, we haven't expanded the event into a full three-day weekend. We got the convention center closed Friday and Saturday nights. The high school worked with the WIA, which is the league, and actually is actually putting a home game on at the high school Friday night between us and the hole, which would be a barn burn, a barn burner for how many people show up. We're going to have a classic card display at the convention center parking lot. And that classic card display will turn into a motorcade of alumni that are going to circle the field at halftime, at a halftime event. Schools opening up, if you, I don't know if you've been in the high school, but they've actually got frames up on the wall, photos of every class from 1933 on. And working with museums, without putting that whole area into museum night, we're going to put special things from the museum below each year. And we're going to take all the trophies out, the trophy case, and match them up to the year of the students. And we're going to have high school yearbooks from each year and turn that into a, a kind of a historical night there Friday night that'll happen before and at time and after the game. That'll all be available. Saturday, we're going to have the dinner we talked about. And we're going to have another silent auction and we're going to have more time to do the silent auction right this year. And we've got 501(c)(3) certificates we can hand out now this year to increase the number of donations we get. We started selling tickets like four days ago and so far we've already sold 50-plus tickets. And if you see the counts down here, based on the heads and beds, out of the 50-plus responses we dug back, 21 of those responses were from cities outside Great Harbor County. And outside the state of Washington, we got responses back from already from alumni from Alaska, Idaho, New York, Nevada, Oregon, South Carolina, Texas, and Mexico. And my, my feeling behind this is, this is the unique event because the people already know what's here. They're not coming for, as a comparison between where do you want to go this weekend? Do you want to go to Ocean Shore? Do you want to go to Long Beach? Do you want to go to Newport? They're saying, we're coming for this reunion because this is our home, where we're from. This is the celebration we're going to have. So our biggest challenge is the more people we reach, the more of our alumni we touch, the more of our alumni we're going to have here. So that's where our focus is going now. And you saw on the financials we gave earlier, we've got a fair amount of money trying to set aside to actually go find these people, get the materials out for them, social media, mailers, whatever it takes for us to reach. If you look at, if we call it the last 60 years and you look at 30 kids for 60 years, right? That's a lot of alumni. And even if we only have half of those alumni still above ground with us, we're still talking about almost 5,000 people. If we get one out of 10, we're going to have 500 people there. That's why I've been worried with you already about, can we actually accommodate that many people in the building? So that's why we're asking for the money. We want to make this work. We always try to make the student, the alumni themselves cover their own costs for food and for the building. And then we're going to have the silent auctions going to be at the high school on Friday night and at, we're going to split. It'll be some auction items at the high school and some items at the convention center. And then Saturday night, depending on how many auction nights we get, we may end up paying you some more money to open up some of the meeting rooms. The reunion I talked about that is an auction too. So we want to make this go. We're excited about it. We've got a great history about it. And to be honest, Mike Duffy died about three months after the last reunion. So there's a lot of people now who want to also come back and say, let's do this in his honor. But I think we're going to have a great amount of attendance for this. And we want to get people here. And we've already got 75 rooms locked up on discounted rate, which try and we're going around to other hotels now. As we see the numbers grow, we don't want to commit to more hotel rooms than we got people coming. And then we're just flying to the hotels. But as the hotel numbers come and the tickets come, we're going to go out and keep trying to get enough tickets to connect the people that are coming. Going to put rooms next to people that are coming.
I have one comment. You do yourself a disservice when you go to one hotel and ask for a discounted rate because you don't know what everyone else would have offered you.
We're talking right now to four hotels and I didn't do that conversation. I had, somebody called convention. Somebody called the local, whatever the line is, the people called us to get a room. And the first three hotels we were given were the first three that she started with because she doesn't know any of that.
There's no local.
There's no central booking.
There's no such, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so I'll go back and find out what happened because.
I'm curious because there's no. Yeah, there's no central booking and the, the convention center itself is not supposed to be recommending one over another. They're just.
Yeah, the convention center didn't. This is, this is the number she found that she thought was a.
Yeah, there's no such thing. So you're going probably through like a maybe a meeting planner or something like that or some, it's not, there's not a, there's not an Ocean Shore central booking thing.
I didn't think there was. When she told me she found something, she had some hotels going already.
Yeah.
Then that's when we came up with the plan and said, we'll start with the ones you, you were given and we'll keep expanding as we go.
Well, my, my comment is not just directed to you. It's to everyone that plans an event. If you're going to go out and ask for discounted rates, you should ask everyone and then give that to your attendees. And these are places that you could get discounted rates. They're offering rates from X, Y, Z. That way you're, you're promoting everyone and you're not picking a central hotel. Especially, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be petty, but I manage a hotel and I haven't got asked for a rate. I'm happy to give you one. But when you're asking a collective group to fund an event, it needs to be so that all the hotels in Ocean Shores are profitable as much. But when you're asking a collective group to fund an event, it needs to be so that all the hotels in Ocean Shores are profitable as much as possible.
Yep, and I I take that, I'll take that back to uh, the person who's working on this. But yeah, we did, we all talked to the two other hotels right now too.
That's great.
So we did, we started with three, and I've been, obviously got three exactly, I'll go back. She told me of what sounded like a good story, but I'll go back and find out if it's been filmed, but how we got to start starting with three.
Yeah, I'd like that phone emergency sound to hear us, I'd like to know what it is.
George, you have anything to talk about?
Um, no, nothing other than, you know, like, so I want you to know that my pushback on trying to maximize the convention center, trying to get you to go with the two days as opposed to the one because you went back and forth
was strictly just. It's supposed to be, right?
Was strictly just business and we we love to have your business, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
No, I wasn't surprised by that at all. Okay. I grew up out here. Mary, do you have some info?
Um, he answered the questions already, I had questions about what the schedule was gonna be, if it was gonna be just one day or the whole weekend. And how many they were projecting or thinking might be coming, so he answered both of those.
So based on this previous uh, budget from twenty-one, you felt that there were actually one hundred and ninety-three rooms? Oh, Friday was seventy-three, sorry. And then Saturday was one twenty, okay, got it, so not necessarily a hundred and ninety-three total, but uh, got it.
And and for being during COVID, we would have to give anybody a whole lot.
Yeah, and I know, I know I got bookings from that of those.
Okay, well, I think some of the other things too that we talked about is uh, thank you for not trying to do it during uh, a peak time period, you pushed to the, towards the end of September. And when you started fighting shoulder season in in your business.
After labor.
After labor, so that's always a a big thank you.
And what we're shooting at now is trying to hook it with a home football game because that's also good.
Yeah.
That's always gonna be a good draw, just to say, hey, come back, we're all alumni and we're gonna go to the ballgame.
Right. Having just good high school to get you a date that stays good, right? So you have to plan this stuff so far in advance.
No, they figured out your wins pretty much when the league gets together and fixes the fall sport schedule, so it's easy to do. And that's why we're, you know, who was playing and when.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Thank you very much.
By the way, you're all invited, especially over you two on one night. Will we sell any tickets at the door?
I'll tell my kid.
Anything, sir? No, that's great, thank you.
Do you need any more topics?
Nope, I got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Vegas nights, is John here?
Yes, sir.
John, how are you?
Good.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Fine, because they already have the convention center booked. Mike, wire?
Anything, sir? So uh, committee, did we have before, we can have to make a quick presentation or uh, did we have some questions that we wanted to start off with?
I have a basic question.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to pick on you.
That's okay.
On your application, there's a bunch of handwritten things and then it looks like there's widened out areas and then handwritten things, so do you like cut and paste from old application or like? But I'm just confused.
Yeah, so I kinda did, I tried to get it all ready to do it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cooperate with me as far as texting and text, like uh, I, anyone happens at the moment I had an old application and I and I widened some out and filled it in, that's a good.
Okay, just trying to understand.
That that's why I, on my fever, we tried to throw it out, it just wouldn't cooperate.
So one of the questions I uh, it's nobody's fault, it's just been a, it's been a historical posting when when they ask how many people stay overnight in paid accommodations and I know I said to some people, I'd rather you said it was seven or eight than three hundred, right? Who is? I'm not exactly sure how many hotel rooms Ocean Shores has, but uh, things, sometimes a committee will roll their eyes like, they're not doing three hundred groups today. So do you have a, do you have a true feeling? Uh, there's nothing wrong with putting on an event that's keeping people that are in town entertained and happy and smiling and glad they're here, right? And then the other one, like the the High Apple Union, they're, it's obvious those people aren't here and they're coming in just for that event, so it's a little bit easier. Have, have you been able to to get a real feel about I know these many people are are spending the night just for this event?
No, I I actually, to be honest, I I don't. Um, I kinda gave a general thought about it, you know, it's Memorial Day weekend, it's no way that it, every hotel was gonna be full already. So uh, I I thought that maybe three hundred was a good number to fill in.
Right, you did write down that number, I pulled that out of the air.
I I don't know what I.
Uh, hundred, hundred and fifty, right?
I can't, it's more than a hundred.
But do you feel that those folks are uh coming literally from out of town just for your event or just enjoying it while they're already here naturally?
I think that uh, Ocean Shores, uh, the Memorial Day holiday is famous for garage sales and flea markets and markets and that type of thing. And I have a marketing campaign, it's gonna cover Thurston County and Pierce County. And with the casino entertainment, the live music and I've already got over forty vendors for result. I think it's gonna be a natural draw uh, for people to come in for the event.
So I heard I think a lot, are are you, if we award you money, are you willing to go to all the hotels and ask them to collect the data for you?
Absolutely, I'm more than happy to do that.
And did you pick this weekend just because it's famous for flea markets and whatnot or I mean, when you're coming up with Memorial Day weekend, is it because of that or is it because of the amount of crowds that it already has? Or what was the logic behind Memorial Weekend?
Well, when I heard that the uh, the date was available, I, to me, I thought, wow, that's a great date to to do an event on. And uh, so that's the, that's what went with my gut feeling when when I heard the date was available and I went to Georgia State, I want that date back.
So as you've gone through, uh, how how many times previously have you done events similar to this?
Uh, actually, I I own an entertainment company for over twenty years and I I produce hundreds of events in Seattle, I have casino entertainment, DJ entertainment and uh, basically um, I have outproduced the, with LTAC funds, I have produced the Ocean Shore Backtaller. I outproduced the Summer Jam last May at the convention center. And I recently outproduced the New Year's Patch at the convention center. So lots of experience in the event business.
So one of the things too that we talked earlier about seed money and wanting to help uh, people get started with events and pull people from out of town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my, my first step is, uh, or my first question is, if the committee was to award some funds, uh, are you comfortable in knowing that it's it's seed money, it's to help you get started and it's very possible next year there would be a way reduced amount or none at all?
Yeah.
How do you feel about your profitability show? We say that at the end, if we're able to help you get started on this, that you'll not just have five thousand dollars left over or one thousand bucks left over, but they, you'll have ten or fifteen or twenty thousand left over. So you can be self-sustaining, it's still a fun awarding five thousand dollars that turns into five hundred bucks.
Right, I'm very confident that I can be self-sustaining, I I actually pretty much am as as now, but uh, I think that the five thousand dollars mostly go to uh, outside marketing, get people around here and kind of the town.
What uh, what format do you?
Alpha Media, I've got a contract with.
Alpha Media, it was just local?
No, a local, uh, my outside of local is with Alpha Media.
Okay, Seattle based.
Uh, Seattle, it's actually uh, the marketing campaign's gonna be Thurston and Pierce County.
Yeah.
And uh, I also have advertising going on, I have now a local station, but I've already paid that.
What stations do they have in Pierce County?
Uh, not sure, they, they, it won't be digital marketing.
Okay.
There's, there's.
Digital, not not radio.
Yeah, there'll be radio advertising uh, as well, but with this particular package. Uh, it's uh, the uh, marketing for Pierce and Thurston County.
Okay, digitally.
Digital.
And are you promoting, you said that that will be, but are you currently promoting this event um, on social media or any other mediums uh, trying to get ahead of the May twenty-fifth date?
Yeah, I I have been very aggressively done so, and I'm on all chat rooms and I have big friends on social media.
Mary, do you have any uh?
Um, I had a question that you've already asked most of them, um, whether this was the first time you were doing this or not and what your experiences with it and uh, what kind of marketing you were doing to bring in. I mean, I realize that people are going to be here, obviously, uh, and it is a popular weekend. Um, and I thought I heard you say that this was the only date that was available this year. Um, if it was successful, is this something that you would consider doing on a non-popular summertime weekend?
Absolutely, as a matter of fact, I'm uh, contemplating that, doing that on a non-popular weekend. But I would still like to keep this weekend as well, so that I uh, probably I'm looking at you producing other events as well.
Okay.
Yes, but the answer is yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, George, you have any? We're gonna, thank you.
My question is.
Hello, Birth Foundation maps. Crystal. I should recuse myself.
Maybe.
Yeah, we designed it well. You have organized the questions or whatever.
So
So I can sit back.
The first map that I gave you guys was the professionally printed map that we did back in January. Um, but since then, we made some changes to the map and um, we added a couple more QR codes, we added a QR code for waterways and a QR code for the golf course. Um, we know that a lot of our visitors don't know about our waterways and we we needed to somehow get out there the exposure for the waterways and how to enter the canal and such, and then plus the golf course. Letting the people know that there's a golf course here. Um, but we also, the changes we made to the map where we added the off-leash dog area for the beach, because I know a lot of tourists, when they come to the beach, bring their dogs and have a lot of our hotels have um, pet-friendly stays. And that I know is something that the people, the tourists just did not know where that was. We added that, we made a golf course, um, uh, its own unkeyed code, we added that information. Um, we apparently had missed a park, so we added my new park on there. Um, so we, and we added the Hydus Trail and we made more specific the beach approaches for walking and for driving, so we did some some updating on the map. Um, this idea was brought to the parks board probably a year plus ago. Um, and we were just trying to figure out how we can do this, how we can make this work, so with some collaboration um, we were able to work on it and and complete it. And I know it's not heads and beds, so I'm sorry to have you, but I know this is not specific to heads and beds, however, I do know that when tourists come here, they want to know what else there is to do besides the beach and so this is just a nice way to show them what we have available um, out in Ocean Shores and we should be showing off our assets, which is waterways and golf course and our parks, we're working hard on parks and improving our parks as well. I think it's great. Um, my uh, only question is, oh, I might have another, but if for some reason we didn't fund it,
Mm-hmm.
do you have a way to produce it otherwise? So, yes, so we're, we're going to present our budget for Parks Board um, to council and hopefully we have success with these, what I'm hoping to do is I will, not hope, I know these are gonna be successful on the motel, I know the convention center has some now, I know that people take them all the time, so I know that they're a success. But what would be brave is to show city council that these really are a success. You know, the motels are coming back for more, it's like we don't, we can't keep enough. Right. And so our hope for the Parks Board is to go out and get a council and ask for money in our budget to do these going forward. Okay, so it would be essentially seed money to get it started then? Essentially, yes, so. And if you get started and produce, when can hotels have them in your hands? Two weeks, a week, very quickly. Okay. They're ready to go pretty much. Okay. Because I I do think they are useful, um, people ask all the time where the off-leash is and then we have to draw a little mouse ourselves and becomes hard to explain to people and things like that and um, I just checked all your QR codes and they work and so I'm really appreciative of that. There's nothing worse than a QR code that doesn't work, correct?
What's a QR code? Kidding.
No, you're wrong, no, you're not, I'll be high.
Uh, Mary, do you have any comments or questions?
No, uh, just one thing I had written down from before and I wanted was to see a copy, but I see you guys all have a copy and just listening to you, it sounds, looks beautiful. Yes, it sounds uh, very uh, comprehensive, so I'm looking forward to actually seeing one.
We've worked really good hard on the map. Really hard, I think it's gonna be ongoing, I think changes will always be made, so we'll always be updating. Right, that looks really good.
George, any input? No.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So, Mary?
Oh, I thought you were trying to use the QR code.
No. All right. Thanks for indulging me. It is uh, Ken Huffman. Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for coming. This is for the Road Wrestling Attractions.
Road Wrestling Attractions. We should have been in my application, but we'll leave the last uh, official ticket sales for the state, everything, we've gotten fully licensed, that's show for. My first free show, I'm licensed, so I ended up looking after you as a show, so four hundred percent genuine.
Well, we appreciate you guys choosing Ocean Shores as I uh, as a location for your matches, I know you've got a few of them already.
It's very good, but each of them out of George, one is. Looking at it, so you're gonna do.
So one of the questions I know we had from last time was uh, why uh, why now for LTAC assistance when you already have a I, assumption, a successful event?
I had no idea, no time to think.
Right.
Because I, yeah, I just came into this, George is my witness, he's watched the road, this whole company uh, came in the, in the experience and finally found out that we got support here and I would love to get into that. Even though it was one time for just these come, these upcoming events.
So uh, but if you're already running a successful event.
Well, they're not like, they're not profitable as any were speaking of, so we pay for the next event.
So you're losing money at this point?
Yeah, so that was the point, we wouldn't be able to maintain.
Well, sponsors are part of your.
It has you. So without, yeah. We're we're just about breaking, but not just slightly.
Okay.
Okay, that's uh. We're just on the show numbers later, I shouldn't get that, we should do.
See here. Sure, it's on here. Yeah.
There it goes. Because there's just right under five grand with what I have budgeted from everybody I have coming in and everybody that's working with me and having our full state licensing, it's an accurate issue to get everybody actually licensed, so there's a hundred different wrestlers that want to wrestle for me, but five of them. So there's a hundred different wrestlers that want wrestling for me, but five of them won't get a license, so it's difficult, but if I had LTAC money for that, we'd be getting wrestlers coming in, you know, nothing, no bother if we could get their licenses done for them. And I wouldn't, wouldn't have to come out of their pockets necessarily. It would more of a company by the end.
Okay. Mary, do you have any specific questions at this point? I'll let you start since uh.
I was curious, I know you had, I looked up, it looked like you had um party shows, January sixth, February twenty fourth and April sixth. How was the attendance for those? I know these are a one day, one evening event. Or is that what you guys have and I don't have?
So that, that.
Yeah, so that's from, ever since getting licensed, from uh March twenty fifth show, was there all our numbers?
The uh January sixth show was two hundred and ninety-two ticket sales. The February twenty-fourth show was two hundred and eighty-eight ticket sales. The April sixth event was a hundred and eighty-eight ticket sales and the previous August event of the twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth was a hundred and sixteen, so that was probably your first event?
Uh, what, what was the name of that one?
Eight twenty-six, twenty-four.
Uh, three twenty-five was when the first license event, and that was exciting. I also had a show the week before that is in Centralia, so I went to two shows at the same time. All on one low budget, so that sucked, but we made it through.
In your application, you took the zip codes where you're selling your tickets from?
Yes, that's all from my online.
Yeah, do you think that you would, if you're awarded money, do you, would you be comfortable going to the hotels? Asking them to actually track for your event?
Yes, I took no time to consider that, I was like, yeah, I already go to every hotel and I give them the flyers, I still know that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't get in this info, that's the first thing we'll talk about.
Yeah, so just ahead of the event, for anyone who cares, is ahead of the event, if you go and ask for either the manager or the supervisor or whatever, and you say, I'm having an event on this date. Um, I would like to know if anyone is coming to Ocean Shores for this event, would you mind tracking it for me? Um, we have the ability in our computer systems to either create a code where it's like a drop-down menu when people are checking them in, they can say, are you coming for this event? And they could just click it. Or um, there's even the old-fashioned paper pen method where you just kind of tally as you're checking people in. And then the best thing to do for anyone doing this would then be to go at the hotel immediately after. So that little piece of paper or something doesn't get thrown away.
That was like a concern, so knowing that now, that's absolutely what I'll be doing.
Yeah. Well, we would be happy to do it for you, but I was only to ask. So I was very impressed with the fact that you included all your ticket sales and they are.
I can't leave theirs. No, and we'll, uh, if you know, type of money will increase that advertising on Facebook, so all social media is uh X is gonna get onto uh Google, Google, search engines, do all that. Everything, everything on the technical side is all, basically everything, but the rest is free.
Do you have any, so you asked for one that was already, has already occurred?
Well, when I submitted, I didn't know I went and everything stopped and stuff.
So you have a June event, do you have any after June maybe?
No, because there's no more available weekends for the rest of the year. So at twenty-five, as soon as we get this one, which I plan to go to, I'm gonna just start today. I don't have twenty-four, twenty-five dates running, and I'd like them to correspond with our Spokane show that I would like to get running as well. So they have Harvard Havoc versus Cascade Chaos is where it will be. So basically, I have the entire pit in Washington all under the Road Wrestling Attractions brand. What Ocean Shores doing in the main event for Harvard Havoc. So I've, every show for Harvard Havoc and Ocean Shores, where we went to Southwest showdown for the Southwest Washington Fair and then we'll change it to Cascade Chaos, I'm gonna go to Spokane, so just like similar to WWE, how they run Monday Night Raw and Friday Night SmackDown. They, most of the time the rosters don't see each other, but it's a big event when they finally do. So that's why I would like to capitalize it to Comino or something, eventually that point.
Right.
And like I said, if I knew about this, we could start a little thing from the start, it would have been a lot of things easier for, I mean, this one.
Well, we do appreciate you trying to do it yourselves.
George, do you have something to say from the convention center statement?
Yeah, I will say that um I've watched him with his event start out, um and he tried on a weekday, um it didn't work for him.
Wednesday, Friday, Wednesday.
Yeah, it didn't work for him, so I understand his need for a weekend, but we're back to the maximize convention center. And one, we're using a whole weekend basically. I know that he's only there on Saturday, but for turnaround time. So we're gonna have to get real creative on how we, how we make these weekends work for him.
Yeah, so the, you know, obviously the easiest thing would be is if we had the convention center rented out, three hundred and sixty-five days here to one person, right? Not gonna happen, so as his dates have filled up to sacrifice an entire week or weekend for a day doesn't pencil financially very well. You tried weekdays, that wasn't obviously successful or sustaining for you. Uh, how do you see being able to uh take an entire weekend for yourself?
Yeah, we did, I didn't even think that was an option, but how, uh, again, assuming you had the days.
But how would that work for you, renting Friday, Saturday, Sunday? What does that look like in your world?
Yeah, we can make that work and we run three different shows that all run together. Cause every single show that's under Road Wrestling Attractions, every single one of them rolls from the last one, but they're not, they went off the curve, they had a magic first show. That history rolls into the shows coming up, so.
Yeah, so it's possible this could grow into.
Yeah, so we could get three.
Running the whole weekend instead of just, I would say, cher, picking a day out of the middle of a good weekend.
It could be like a battle royal, well, a battle royal on the first day, twenty-five guys in there, well, the winner needs to go to the day two.
Okay.
Uh, that's similar to what WrestleMania does for WWE, like they used to be one day, Sunday, now they're Saturday, Sunday. Taking up as much weekend as we can, and April sixth, which is our last show, we had to compete with WrestleMania. Uh, AEW put on their biggest show, uh, just for every wrestling promotion, put on a show that began. And we're able to still get a hundred and eighty-eight different sold.
Okay.
A hundred percent on the growth, that's, yeah, anything we can do for this company, I'm all for it, man, it takes to do it.
So you experiment with weekdays, which is obviously our first choice. How have your not between, you know, Memorial Day, Labor Day or the pop, how are you doing with the rest of the year, the shoulder season as they call it?
Well, as we said earlier, the dates have just been available, they come, like the first three, I've got to schedule as fast as possible. Uh, I just, as a rule, the twenty twenty-five, we didn't have more answers on that, cause I'm not able to take any dates on chat.
So June is necessarily.
No, no, that was just, uh, just as if we have this date available, do you want it?
Be in February.
Yeah, yeah, we did in February, if I'm, if I was, I was like, just think of else on the okay, she's over there.
Perfect. Any other questions, folks?
This eight thousand that, or sixteen thousand, whatever you're asking for, what is it? Since you already have done the other shows and you've been through them, uh, what is this going to be used for?
I wanna be able to, like I said earlier, I wanna be able to bring more talent in and get, get them through the process of getting them licensed. I'd like to increase all of our, the people we already have, I wanna get them more money for what the, all the dedication they put in. Uh, I wanna get all the local resources we have, like North Beach TV, using the radio, Johnny, if that was in here Vegas nights, we use someone at BJ. I'm all for local resources, I wanna improve everything we can and Harvard Havoc is an Ocean Shore show.
How will you market this outside of Grace Harbor?
Uh, I have flyers, I put flyers everywhere in Grace Harbor, and outside of that, we do Facebook advertising and other social media marketing. Uh, and I do, I've done email marketing, I have a mail gym, I have over five thousand email customers, right? Shoot them an email twice a week, and it's a lot of success from that and we get LTAC funding again, pump that up even more and get more people from out of town to show them.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. George Lyons, uh, Eric. Senior Senator. Actually, Lyons, uh, Playground Equipment Design. So uh, talk to us a little bit about the project.
We're looking at completing the plate on equipment, stuff we have now is, it's the ocean. It's rusted away, it's just gone, some have been taken out already. We have received eighteen thousand for the large piece of equipment and that is getting ordered currently. Um, we have another fourteen thousand for smaller pieces, benches, um, this type of thing. It would, right now, what we're seeing, I'm at the Lions Club most every day. And I've been keeping track of the numbers and we're seeing about fifteen people per day during the weekdays. And about twenty-five people a day on the weekend using the existing equipment. Which is monkey bars and swings, that's all we have. Um, pretty sure we would double those numbers. Don't know, we, we can't quantify how many people that are coming to the park are here, live here, and how many people are visiting. I do know empirically that uh from the hotel across the street, we see quite a few. Again, I can't quantify it, and it's not something I can go out and say, fill out this form, tell me a lot of people, many people. And as far as uh your question on asking the hotels, yes, I would be willing to, but.
Oh, yours is equipment, so you're.
Yeah, this is, this is.
It's a lot of the brochures, it's not, it wouldn't, you can't do that, it's just.
It's a good idea, I like it.
No, there's a difference between an event and an event on a stay, so I, I understand.
And we're looking at probably a ten-year lifespan of the equipment. Again, we all live here, we know it rusts away, it just, it does. So that, um, those are daytime numbers, so we're looking at your fifteen and twenty-five. We have no idea at all, nighttime use.
Sure.
Don't have cameras out there, not gonna put them in.
Mary, did you have anything you wanted to uh ask?
How old is the equipment that's there right now?
I have no idea really, but I know that the Parks Department pulled out quite a bit. Um, some of it was left there, some of the bouncy animals, sorry, I don't know the proper name.
Yeah.
Um, I looked at the bouncy animals, we've got them in the garage. The springs are of course rusted completely away, they're aluminum bodies and most of the aluminum has corroded away. Um, so no idea, um, some of them look twenty years old. But again, we're in Ocean Shores.
Yeah. And with the new equipment, I assume that, that it'll be something that the Lions Club will um continue the upkeep?
Yes, that is our contract with the city. We do maintenance on these things, uh, I'm the primary maintenance person.
Okay, thank you.
Shannon, anything to add?
I think, I think Mary covered mine as far as the maintenance part of that.
Well, you said it, you anticipate it not lasting forever, being Ocean Shore, so what would, when it doesn't last in the future, what would your, the Lions Club plan be?
Part of what we're doing right now as the Lions Club is we are redefining our monies and how we handle them. We are upping our events, we are advertising more. Uh, our advertising is mostly through Facebook and our website. Um, we're hoping to build up a reserve over time, be able to say, okay, this piece of equipment has gone bad, now we replace it instead of waiting till we're thirty-two thousand dollars in arrears. Is that really where we're starting right now?
Well, you, you're a very charitable organization, obviously, uh, it's just sometimes you forget to fund your own.
Yeah.
Devices, so this is.
Yeah, it's part to do.
Yes, it's almost like you need your, have a reserve for items like this because uh
Yeah.
You deserve to fund your own things.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Butch, New Year's Eve. Don't be shitty, he's had a media.
Last year was a good season. And we learned a lot on that one. And uh, North Beach Indian Media is a file one C three, we basically got the foundation due because we wanted to help out, look for the extra expenses and stuff that came on the radio station. We made a radio tower and all that other stuff. So, since Chaos City couldn't raise money, we have to figure out how, we weren't making it on spaghetti plates. It would get two, three hundred dollars a year. So we thought we'd try a New Year's Eve event last year, it was very successful. And uh including the LTAC money, we uh, we brought in about thirty-nine thousand dollars. And that was, well, they bought in, the expenses were twenty, twenty-seven thousand.
When you say uh, how much was LTAC last that you were?
Twenty.
Okay, so you, uh, so nineteen thousand dollars in, in income for getting the LTAC?
We ended up with about just under thirteen thousand dollars in net value. So, we thought we were very successful. And yes, Shannon, I will go to all hotels this time, I will check them out, I learned a lot. I know that we had probably two-thirds of the people that were there were from out of town. They were either from the Combs Seattle area, Forks, Port Angeles, Cheyenne, Centralia, some from Spokane, even. So.
How do you know that?
I was, I was trying to ask everybody where they're from, I didn't know, I was trying to figure out how many locals we had here, about a third of them were from from Ocean Shores Aberdeen area, but most of them were from out of town. And the locals that were sitting at tables with people, they were saying, hell, they're visiting there from Forbes, you know? So we knew that there was a lot of people, we didn't know exactly what hotels they were staying at. I'm pretty sure they weren't driving home at one-thirty in the morning on New Year's Eve, so uh, I would do a lot better. If we get a chance to this again, we could do a lot better, find out where they're staying in, okay? I wanna go back and start advertising with the hotels in the summer when everybody's here, get flyers out to all the people, know there's New Year's Eve coming. I also talked to the mayor and I wanna meet with your, I don't know what the name of the association is.
I'm not on it anymore, it's the Ocean Shore Marketing Coalition and I removed myself when I was, when I applied for LTAC because it'd be a conflict in the years.
But I wanna meet with them, so I had them all in the same room together and be able to talk to them and ask them what I need to do to find out what they want out of us on this, it's on a Tuesday night, so it's really, it's off-season and in the middle of the week, right? Uh, we are planning on bringing in, well, it's gonna be British Week. We're bringing in British media out of LA, they are a, you attribute that. They do all the different changes of the costumes and all that stuff when they come on there. We'll have them on for two and a half, three hours, uh, we will be on, Justin will be on, open the show for about ninety minutes and we'll bring the Beatles on. But we wanna, we've been talking to the cinema theater to bring in my hard day's night help to play on the theater during that week. We wanna get some British flags and put up on the entranceway, convince instead, kind of make it a British week. I'm gonna go talk to Bron over there, kinda see if we get some special fish and chips going on. You know, just different things to bring up that British spirit for that weekend or that night. We will be, what we did last year, we did Alpha Media. And we did all digital advertising, social media advertising, radio advertising, we did a whole bunch. We spent almost six thousand dollars with them last year just to get the, the word out. And we had over two hundred and fifty people that showed up and everybody we talked and we had a great time, they all wanna come back this year. We had six businesses sponsors at a thousand dollars a table. And they also didn't wanna do it again this year, plus we have some more businesses that wanna help sponsor. So we are hoping after a couple of years of doing this, in the third year, we will be self-sufficient enough to be able to give money to the city for the power and be able to put these events on ourselves without LTAC. That's our goal.
And uh, well, you're good on the way already.
Yes, we are.
I mean, technically by next year, you would be.
Yeah, well, some of that's gotta go in the city, I mean, we can't keep it all just for the event, so.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's, we're not looking at that, that's, that's another deal. Okay.
But I want you to know where, what, what our goal is, okay, our goal is to, uh, to be self-sufficient, we don't wanna have to come for LTAC money. But we're only gonna help for about a year and a half, so it's taking us some time to get our feet on the ground, get going on this.
Barry, do you have any input or questions?
I think I missed it, how many people came last, uh, New Year's Eve?
Little over two-hundred-and-fifty.
Okay. All right, um, no, I think that's it.
George, what was your, uh?
No, I'm gonna correct me, you said thirteen thousand was your net last year?
Under, just under thirteen.
Just under thirteen, okay. And that was my question, but I think you answered it as to why this amount is still at twenty. Um, and it hasn't started to go down, but I think that you answered that.
I mean, we should do this with LTAC money this year, but we wouldn't make a diemop if it's about break even.
Okay.
And our goal is actually to raise money to, to help, you know, to do this on our own, and eventually we'll be able to help to, with our, the radio station and their expenses, but.
Okay, so I couldn't hear it too well when you did answer that question, George should have said you did. So, why was it that even though you made thirteen thousand, you still need the twenty thousand?
Well, if we didn't have the LTAC money, we would probably just about break even or lose a little bit on this. It took twenty-seven thousand dollars to put last year's on. Okay, uh, found out these one-line events are not cheap, and this one's gonna be a little more expensive because we gotta fly these boys in from LA, got that expense, I gotta rent some box amps, I gotta get a certain kind of uh, rolling keyboard player, but these guys are down to, you know, they wanna be just like the Beatles were on stage. So, yeah, the backline is gonna cost us some money to, to put this on, more than last year. Last year, we kinda did it on the cheapest, most of it possibly could, and that's how good it's a much money, but with the twenty grand helping us this year, this one will probably be more around a little over forty grand to put on, so. Yeah, we got a lot of raising to do, but this is an LTAC, it's gonna be sponsors and all kinds of stuff.
Shannon?
I have a comment, um, the, the Beatles show that was by Cirque du Soleil in Las Vegas has been canceled. And it got a lot of social media, um, attention because, uh, Cirque du Soleil is not the one that canceled the show. It's probably one of the first times someone's canceled one of their shows, and it, um, it was the only licensed Beatles. But it was a big deal. And so, um, you know, there is a lot of people that really like Beatles, it is a very popular thing. And if you go ahead and track things, or not track, but promote it sooner, I think the downfall you guys had last year is that you did not start promoting soon enough. And that might have been due to winning about money, I don't know, but that seems to be why you, you could have probably been a little bit more successful, so if you're promoting in the summer, I think that's a good thing. Um, the other thing I wanna distinguish is, in my opinion, LTAC funds and hotels and heads and beds have nothing to do with the radio station, so I wanna clarify. Yeah, so I, I hope that, you know, you could, if you want to promote events and do events and what you do with the money, you know, we would hope that you would be self-sufficient enough that you can continue doing your events and meet your own business plans, but it's not our focus should be heads and beds and not funding things for the city or the radio station.
I'm not asking you to fund the city, but I was just trying to explain.
Yeah.
How that money is distributed, while we're raising them and.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've started from scratch last year. We didn't have zero in bank when we started, so, yeah, we were a little late getting out the gate, but this year, I gotta say, we're gonna try to get the horsepower early. Get, get that out there.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. David?
Hello.
Marketing College. Welcome. So, we know, we know a little bit about the awarded funds in the fall, but there's been more. You guys have uncovered more things that you need to accomplish, so just talk to us about what's going on with the Marketing Coalition, and why you're back for more funds.
Okay. So.
And then Mary's having a hard time, so.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I have soft voice too, so. Our vision for where we started, we realized turning to a professional agency would be our best hope to bring everything all together. So, we lucked out in the Capture Share Release folks that had been doing Westport. Westport did not renew with them, and they became available. So, we reached out to them to get a proposal, uh, and speak with them, and what they found out is that the money was more for what they would do just to get us our foundation for the first year and the basis of everything to grow. Just before this meeting, we met with them, and we are signing with them, so we're committed to them. And the work is all, we, we started with our own platform, um, but now we are going to go with them, and they're designing everything. The invoice that we have here are included, shows all the, um, labor that they're doing, and the design work, and where they, where all the money and everything is going to. So, it's been a really interesting process for us, so what we found out, our hope was to, and is still, to bring the whole city together. All of the small businesses can come to one place that we can help promote them, and we can with all the energy of everyone putting into one, basically one good path, let's say, that we will have farther reach. And this professional help from Capture Share Release people, we believe their professionalism and their outreach that they have and their connections and everything that they've done, uh, is, is the way to go, so.
Uh, my first question is, you said you just signed with them, so if you're not awarded any funds today, what's the plan?
So, we will work within the budget of the money that we have, that we have already received. And they will work with us on that, and will scale back to what we need to. Um, there is an opportunity also for a few grants that they brought to the tables and know about, just wonderful. Uh, making a partnership, and they know more resources than what we even know. Um, so for example, there's an airport, uh, agency that, that advertising for the airport, we've been applying for grants, and they don't know. So, we're looking at some other options too. Um, what we found out, this is really, uh, the other one word is, it's been challenging to understand and do things the correct way. For example, photo licensing, and who owns the right to the, uh, artwork, the creativity part of it. Um, and how we can share or not share it, and keep it organized and keep it legal so that artists receive, um, benefits and royalties from what they do. Uh, it was more complicated when we sat down to really put the organization together, um, and it's been an education. So, while we started in the fall, we, we have become professionally organized, uh, recognized at this date. Um, and we can start our own small platform, we started our social, uh, media, and now we're ready to be responsible to take over. So, and take it to the next level.
Have you gotten to a point where, uh, with this agency, where you define what they own when you potentially walk away in the future versus what is your owned content?
Yeah.
Because I know Westport walked away, and so.
Yes, um, and I, we learned it today, is that, uh, so with perpetuity, is that the correct word? So, anything that we, they do for us, we own forever.
So, you're, you're the R of it?
Yes, and so, and, uh, so the vision again too is that, um, we found out today where we were going to do a Dropbox where the local businesses could go to the Dropbox and draw out, and it's professional photos or, or any type of advertising that we have in there to share, that there's another way to do it, um. And, uh, but then keep it legal, where it is licensed where it should be. Um, and that there will be a library set aside of photos, professional photos, and, um, things that they can learn. And then hope that they will also share with us too, so it's gonna be a really big education to bring the whole community into this. Um, but I'm very excited, like every event that's here, we're going to do a comprehensive, um, uh, calendar of events. Cause there's just no one area that everything, uh, drops into really to share for what's going on in the chores. And some of the other challenges that we have too is, um, like, for example, Google Ads, right, we play to pay with them, or pay to play with them. Um, we're behind in their websites of the purchase, and the domains are owned by someone that, like, some of the good ones, like, you know, Ocean Shores, whatever. Um, and they've had no updates for, you know, five, ten years, and they come up first. So, we're combating with the Google Ads where you pay to play more clicks and more advertising dollars you put into it, where we move ourselves up, where we're gonna be recognized, so. I'm sorry, you interrupted.
I was just gonna say, um, the, they've already started posting like calendar of events and different things on their, um, social media platform, and they're very well done. Um, one thing I think to remember is that, um, everyone on the coalition is not a marketing expert, it's just a group of people that had formed a coalition because we, at the time, some marketing was better than no marketing. And, um, historically speaking, uh, back eight years ago when I came to town, we were, uh, giving over a hundred thousand dollars through, uh, the chamber to, uh, Mark Plackett's group, I don't call the name of it, um, and that went for years. And then it stopped, and, uh, then Diane came, and it was gonna be done through the convention center, and I don't know, um, I might be wrong, and George could correct me, but I don't think that the convention center is currently marketing all of Ocean Shores encompassing. I think you mostly market your tiny, like, your events and the here and now and things like that.
Yeah, Ocean Shores actually has put out in print, um, to like South Sound Magazine, Here and Here and Now. Um, like you and I worked on a little bit here and now, so, no, I totally agree that, um, we need to do some more. And I, this amount to me, after doing some marketing, because I'm not an expert either, I've learned as I go. Um, this amount to me is, is, uh, is, is not a big amount at all. I do know that, um, the only thing that I would ask is, is when you say you wanna a partnership, I think we should all work together because we are the city, the convention center. And I think that if we could have meetings and, and not be redundant as to how we're advertising and doing different things like that. I mean, I think we just need to work together and talk about what we do, and, and that would be my suggestion.
You're right on the mark, George, and I think this is a unique opportunity that we now have to do just exactly that. That everyone, uh, we're gonna have to educate the community, the business community. And even the, um, people that are, you know, having their conversations and stuff like that, and, or small events or anything like that. This is kind of a one-stop shop, and it, it's a daunting task to keep it up, we know that. Um, but we will be paying the Capture Share Release people, it will be monitored, it will be current. Whereas in the past, things die out, so this is the foundation that we're starting with, and we're hoping to build on it for years to come.
Can you ask Capture Share, it's repeat, isn't it?
Capture Share.
Repeat, uh, can they?
I mean, I think in fishing, it's like.
No problem, can you ask them to maybe see if they could go to some of the old website owners of these things that are getting in your way, or some of the old Facebook groups that are maybe, or pages that you start typing in Ocean Shores, and then you see a page that's not maintained, like, maybe they could send messages to these accounts and ask that maybe they if they're not going to do anything with them, that they maybe archive them for a later date or whatever, so that they don't kind of compete with each other. That's one thing I thought of, um, and, but just for people listening, um, I'm training someone within my company right now who is a North Beach native. They don't understand marketing, um, they've lived here all their life. And so, tourism is a little bit different to them. And so, when we were talking about social media, one of the things that I said is that Ocean Shores doesn't have a lot of social media presence going from one place, and I took them to the, what the city normally does for the convention center. And I said, but Westport had, and so Westport seen an uptick in visitors and things like that. And they were like, why would anyone go to Westport? And I was like, well, you're from here. Um, I said, I want you to now go to the Westport page, and we went pretty far back in it. And tell me if you have never been here, which one you would pick, and they said Westport.
Yeah.
And they actually said, it kind of makes me wanna go check it out now, because I've not been in years, and I, like, you know, from what I'm seeing, maybe it's changed a little or something, and so it was, it is something for people to consider, you know, when, when you start getting people, you know, where Westport has a great social media presence and Ocean Shores doesn't, you know, you start losing some tourism there. And we don't want to lose the new tourism.
So, to, uh, reply to your comment, when the first order of business that we did today was exactly that. How are we going to go to, uh, these people that have these domains that have died off when they're dead? So, we're, we're already moving that, yeah. Uh, and it was quite interesting too, an eye-opening that, um, when we stop to think about Ocean Shores competitors, right? You know, Long, Astoria, you've got other areas. Uh, and they really opened our eyes as to how they've already studied what some of them are doing. So, they're not, well, they'll use someone in the same model, they're not taking what they did in Westport and bringing it here. They are doing something brand new with all their things that they learned from Westport, that they would do different or do better. So, we don't want people to think that, oh, they're just copying and, and they're just doing this. Well, some of the successes that they had, they may do that, but Ocean Shores is so much more to me than Westport that they're really excited and they, they created a quite a bit of enthusiasm, and that's just like sitting down and having key conversations like that. They're really excited about.
Barry, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
Um, so this seventy thousand that you're asking for, this is really to expand what you have right now, you did answer, I guess, that you are up and running already, um. And, uh, from what Shannon said, you've got some things out there already. Um, is this something that is going to be needed money every year to maintain? Or is this just a, a startup, uh, sticker money?
Yes, it's not a startup, it would be, so the, between the two asks that we have represents about, I believe, ten percent of what the LTAC collection was. That will be turned back directly to advertising and promotion, uh, to bring new guests and do an outreach. So, yes, it would be needed funded every year.
Okay.
And so, in addition for this, when we started in the fall, we thought, you know, it's fine inside, let's ask for eighty thousand dollars and see, you know, what we can do, we had no idea until we sat down the actual hard costs. We thought we could, and we can do a lot with, with the other eighty thousand dollars, with no doubt that we will. Um but the real hard figures are the reality, this is what it costs to do a professional wealth gap campaign.
And quite honestly, I think. From what I learned in my short time there and where I sit today, it would be doing the group kind of a disservice. Because when they got awarded money, I really, and I heard some comments personally. I think the expectation of a lot of people is that their businesses are gonna be marketed with no effort to them. From some of the comments I got. And that Ocean Shores is gonna overnight be on the map similar to Westport. And we did not give them the Westport budget. And so it's kind of setting someone else to fail. Because you know, the the money that they've gotten, while they'll make do with what they have, I think the public perception. Is a little bit different. And so if if they were to be funded more, I feel like we would be matching the perception of what people are expecting. In my opinion.
Uh and if you, so the vision is with the marketing is to experience Ocean Shores, right? It's a whole lifestyle from the water base to the beach to the living, to the camping, the tourism things, the lifestyle of living in Ocean Shores. It's a great, a a great way of promoting Ocean Shores and a total, total talent.
And uh I'll just add, from my experience on a number of boards. That spend millions a year in advertising, my my own companies that I'm affiliated with. Spend about four hundred thousand a year just in the Grace Harbor area of marketing uh for us to have Ocean Shores. Put on the map so that people outside of the area, the I five quarter or further, wherever. You folks deem are are marketable areas. Uh it it's going to take hundreds of thousands of dollars. Consistently, year after year after year, to get top of mind awareness as us being a location for people to come.
Yeah.
And it's not going to happen overnight. You're not gonna see anything in six months if you started spending twenty thousand a month right now. It's it's month after month, year after year. It's a long plan.
Yeah.
And as we entertain different, I appreciate this is a small budget for LTAC this time. The one that we have in the fall is significantly larger. But as we talk to different volunteers here. They're putting on festivals and events that are bringing people in or entertaining the people while they're already here. Yours is the only group that's actually trying to bring everyone to this town all year long. To help them enjoy all of the other things that are being done. So it's a it's a true partnership as far as my vision of you actually. Promoting the pizza place in town outside the area, not so much. You're you're promoting Ocean Shores and all the neat things to do while you're here. And why why you should come. Um so I would even hesitate to say that what you've asked for now. Isn't a realistic budget for the long term. Uh but you've got to compete on the ground and start getting some results for people to. To see and be comfortable with. So Barry, any other questions? Board, any other questions on this?
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And our last presenter. Needs to put a different hat on. Talk to us about the convention center and the request for funds to help carpet the buildings.
Yeah, and the and the first maybe would ask for full replacement of the carpet of after listing to the LTAC committees concerns. And and the amount of LTAC that was available to be awarded. We did go back um and look at getting material only. And then looking at professional installation later down the road. Uh because we we believe that we'll be able to pull some of the money from the system to help with the additional cost of that. Unfortunately, because it was such a short turnaround to have three uh three people that are going to send me quotes. That were supposed to be here by noon today, which I'm not either one of them. I believe they'll be here sometime today. So what we would ask is, is we're asking right now for at least the cost of the material and I can't give you that amount right this second. Can't get those quotes.
Okay. Any questions?
Can we estimate the cost and maybe give an overage since like we have a generalized estimate? Based on the numbers that were provided when I asked Mohawk what the cost would be?
Well, see, I didn't get the same.
Cause I think you have to have an actual recommendation and award today. So that's my concern is I don't think you could just say.
From what I was looking at, based off of the original quote plus the phone conversations I've had, it's about eighty. That's what the material cost was.
That's what I was thinking it was eighty-five, so.
So you're somewhere right now.
Yeah.
And. I imagine it's realistic. Sorry, you might be able to direct me here, it'd be my first time. Uh. We, the board, could say, if they chose to, we could award the convention center's capital and put it fund. Eighty-five thousand dollars.
You, here.
The board could say.
Yeah, you could you could do that as a recommendation to council.
So, right. So even even though we don't have an exact number.
Right.
Um that could be done possibly, so. Is it uh, since we've now completed any other questions for George?
No, I appreciate doing that.
Uh if uh, are we able to take a five minute break?
Yeah.
Exactly, okay. Let's uh adjourn for uh, let's adjourn for ten minutes, come back and uh. What was that, one forty-eight, something like that? Welcome back. Barry, how you doing? All right, we have a committee, we've got a landscape oriented. Page that has all of the different organizations that applied for LTAC funds. And the dollars amount that they requested. Mary, I sent you a picture of it, but you also have it in your packet.
Yeah, I printed it out.
Okay, perfect. And so I just thought. The easiest might be to just go line by line and I'll ask if uh any of the three of you would like to fund. Uh suggest a funding amount for the different applicants and based on your recommendation. We'll see if there's uh any other support for that and just go line by line with uh all the different uh. All eighteen organizations. I will say to all of the organizations that uh have applied. That we are sorry that we just don't have a big open checkbook this year or this this time of the year. To fund everyone. Uh we're sorry, no hard feelings. Uh I know that all of these causes are near and dear to your hearts. And uh we don't mean to cause you grief or uh we don't mean disrespect to your organization. We just have a very difficult job to do and we have to make sometimes unpopular decisions. And so uh we'll move on here with all respect to all the organizations in the future. I I think that you've heard, and I'm sorry Pat's not here today, but you you heard us at the first meeting that. We really are trying to do better and we want to help bring more people to Ocean Shores. And we want to help the convention center be successful. We want you folks to have full venues. We want the city hotel rooms filled. Uh we want the people that are here in those hotel rooms happy and and enjoying themselves here. And so it's quite a combination of of things we're trying to achieve here. And so please bear with us as we get through this. I will start right now, folks, with the accent marketing chili cook pot. And have a recommendation if there are any fundings, anybody that wants to fund their request for seventy-five hundred dollars. Hearing none, I will go to the Associated Arts of Ocean Shores art block. Their request was ten thousand dollars. Do we have any discussion on funding level for them? I will move on to an additional request for funds for an associated arts for the festival. Uh it was a seven thousand dollar request for additional funds. I will move on to City of Ocean Shores Wayfair signs. It was a thirty-five thousand dollar request. I have a recommendation, uh I have a application for the Hayek reunion. It was seventy-four hundred dollars. Do I have any recommendations on that request?
I think.
Recommend funding?
I think it's uh important to the North Beach culture of our community, to recommend a hundred year of it. Um and uh I like that he was listening to what George said. And he extended his event date.
Are you comfortable uh with the funding level at seventy-four hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Can we please do that by motion? If you're, if this is gonna be the recommendation that goes to council, it needs to be very clear.
Okay.
Motion second, vote.
So I will entertain a motion to fund the Hayek reunion with seventy-four hundred dollars.
I second.
Did I just make a motion?
Yeah.
I apologize. I will entertain a motion.
I will motion to fund the Hayek reunion for seventy-four hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Apologies. I'm new and I'm not the mayor pro tem or the mayor, so I don't know if I run the meeting better.
Practice means perfect.
Uh, North Beach Independent Media New Year's Eve event, they have requested twenty thousand dollars. Do I have a recommendation?
I will make a recommendation to fund some of it, or at least have a discussion about funding. I would, I I do think that it was in its infancy last year. Uh I. I am comfortable with funding some of it, not all of it, and wonder what others think.
I agree with that. Um absolutely. I don't think I'd be comfortable with the full twenty thousand. Um. But it did sound like it did well and they're gonna start promoting it more now.
Do I?
I'll make a motion to fund ten thousand dollars to them.
I'll second that.
Beach Independent Media New Year's Eve.
So is that, was that a second, Mary?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor of funding ten thousand dollars for North Beach Independent Media New Year's Eve? Say aye. North Beach Independent Media Music Fest, it was a twenty thousand dollar request. Ocean Shores Convention Center, two hundred thousand dollar request uh to put towards carpeting.
Based on what George said, I will make a motion to fund ninety-five thousand dollars towards carpeting. At the Ocean Shores Convention Center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the record, George Lee's recusing.
Do I need to vote on this one? Uh I'll I'll say aye. Ocean Shores Lions Club, fourteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents for playground equipment. And benches and such. Anybody want to? Make a motion or offer up a dollar amount for funding?
I think it is important to to fund that. I I don't think it's bringing heads in beds, but I do think it is. Something like the skate park that the people are gonna use when they are here.
Are you comfortable with the fourteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents?
I am.
Do I have a second?
I'm comfortable with a lesser amount.
What's your discussion, George?
I have a go with a lesser amount also.
Would you amend your uh fourteen thousand, sixty-nine dollar?
Yes. Um.
So, can I propose my number?
Yes.
My number would be five thousand, thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
You want to explain where that came from?
Because I think that the Parks Foundation uh flyers are appropriate. And uh also don't, while they don't put heads in beds, um I wanna see that funded. Um I'm have a harder time with playground equipment and equipment that. I really feel like a lot of the equipment type things really people should have like a capital improvement plan for. And so I want to give them something because I do see people using it. I do see when there are, you know, the craft fairs. And things like that, that the children are being entertained on it. The craft fairs, those people are all staying for at hotels. Because it, you know, usually typically, um there's one that I know, you know, isn't just local crafters. And so I I do feel like if we are going to fund non-head in bed items. That it should at least mirror what we're we're going to do, or what I was going to recommend doing for the Parks Foundation. And so that was why I came up with the same exact number.
Where we at, Sarah? Does she need to amend her motion?
No, Shannon made the motion, you need a second.
Okay, so I need a second for Shannon's uh motion of five thousand, thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Yes.
Second.
First and second in favor?
Aye.
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 You. I have a request, Ocean Shores Marketing Coalition for seventy thousand dollars. What say you?
I would vote to uh fund the seventy thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
George? Uh, very enthusiastic guys. Ocean Shores Parks and Conservation Foundation, five thousand, thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents for maps to be distributed to. Hotels and the convention center and other places of attraction in Ocean Shores.
All motion that we fund the entire amount, five thousand, thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to the Ocean Shores Parks and Conserv. Conservation Foundation, since I already said I was going to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And.
Aye, sorry.
And for the record, uh Rich Hartman's recusing himself.
Yes.
Just making everything very clear.
Ocean Shores Selfie Scene, twenty-five thousand dollar request. Do I have consideration? Renton Chamber of Commerce, seventy thousand, six hundred dollars requested. Do I have a motion? Rogue Wrestling Attraction, sixteen thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion that we fund eight thousand dollars to Rogue Wrestling Attraction. Um. The their total ask was sixteen thousand and one of them was for a past event and I don't wanna fund anything past. But I do feel like he took very constructive criticism. It is open to try and expand on weekends. Um in in the following year that George might have availability. So I'd like to fund, fund the whole eight thousand for the one that wasn't passed.
Do I have a second? Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Success Through Sports, eighty-five thousand dollar request. Do I have a motion? The Perfect Tide, twelve thousand dollars requested. Do I have the motion? Vegas Knights Rock Blues Play Market Festival, five thousand dollar request. Do I have a motion? VFW Golf Tournament, fifty-five hundred dollar request. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we fund twenty-five hundred dollars of the VFW Golf Tournament. And though I think that they're, if you look at what they're donating back to the community, it is not on a summer day. Um, I don't think it puts a ton and ton of heads in the beds, but it does put some. It's not a summer day, I think, for the most part. If you're looking at what they give back, I think it's an appropriate number.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any more discussion of, uh, any of the applicants that just went through?
I wanted to comment on one of the applications if I could.
Sure.
Uh, I think that success through sports, it, the ask was really high and that's, and I had a question about the mats, um, being capital expenditures that should already be purchased. Um, I think that if that, I think that it was in the spirit of what LTAC should be to try and bring these events for, um, promotion on, um, using the convention center and that will fill heads and beds with a lot of people from outside because of the type of jiu-jitsu tournament it was. But I think if, I want to make, in case that applicant is listening, in the future, I think you have to have hard book dates already or potentially book dates and a, a better map of these are the dates. Teaser and that kind of stuff so that it's, and it's, and maybe a smaller ask. And it would have been, I would have been comfortable motioning something, so I just wanted to make that so.
Yeah, I, I agree. Anytime that we can bring in, uh, events like that, that usually will have two hundred participants. There, there's a lot of heads in beds, a lot of activity for the convention center. It starts off with, are there event dates available? Uh, has the event been sanctioned by the organization that they're trying to persuade to come here? And like you said, they need to have the equipment in line too, but, uh, I, I agree, uh, that I, I hope that they are able to organize themselves a little, uh, better or differently and come back again. Uh, we have time for poll of comment now, right, Sarah?
Yep. Did you want to know how much you have left?
Uh.
Doesn't matter. Okay.
Doesn't matter. We, we know we're okay.
Yep. Do you want to run through again exactly what you have on the news on?
Uh, let's do the poll of comment and
Yeah.
Listen to their input and then, uh, will, we can, we can, we can.
Okay, Susan Connery, do you have a public comment?
Thank you, Sarah. I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Kristen, do you have a public comment?
I do. Um, so I heard numerous times that LTAC fund requesters are not going to all the hotels to ask for rates for their events. Um, I'm not sure what the city has or the convention center has, but if there's a, a portal for RFPs, um, possibly they should be, somebody should be pointing that out to them so that they can submit their RFP there for their rooms. That way they're not getting lost somewhere or having to reach out individually to all the hotels and the information is just living in the RFP portal and just for hotels in our city only. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jean Shattuck, do you have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, Gina Rawlings, do you have a public comment?
Yes. I wanted, I wanted to weigh in on the playground equipment request for the Lions Club. And although they don't put heads in beds, there are tremendous amount of children going into that program or onto that property using the playground equipment. It's not just for the craft fairs. I worked for two hotels and a lot of times we would have the parents take their kids to that park. On average, he averaged about ten children a day at the park as a count. That I think his number was shy, but I think it's very well used and it's, and it's part of the city as well. So I would hope that that would maybe be a consideration of increasing the amount of money that they've asked for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Debbie Bees, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for putting in their time to do this LTAC committee and distributing the funds fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. John Williams, do you have a public comment?
Oh, just to reiterate what I said before, I thought this was, uh, quite a bit different approach to it, uh, much better for the, all the reasons that have been discussed and I hope, uh, between now and next fall that the committee gets together and, and looks at ways to make it even, uh, uh, more, um, a better, better, better value, valuation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes online public comment. Does anybody in the room have a public comment?
I had a question.
Uh, you can ask the question. They won't answer it unless they choose to after public comment. So, go ahead.
Um, as, as far as heads with beds, I probably got the best track record of a lot of people here in this town. I promoted, uh, Sun and Surf for twenty-five years, which is HOG, and when the casino came in and they realized that, hey, they got ten, fifteen thousand bikes in town, we can add it to this. And the last show I booked with HOG for the convention center, I had Randy Hansen, I think we drew thirty-five people because they had hills bills there for, for free. And then, as you know, HOG pulled out, a gentleman named Dennis started, uh, Bikers at the Beach. He asked me if I could come in and help out with that and, um, and we actually did really good being a biker event. I brought in, uh, Steppenworth, which is the number one anthem, Born to be Wild, of the bikers. And I also had, uh, for the Native Americans, I brought in Redbone, which was the first Native American band that, uh, hit the, hit the, uh, waves, the airwaves. And I was very successful with that. And then I've always done anything I can to help, uh, the radio station here and, and they asked me about, uh, helping out with a few things coming up, but I, I, I guess you guys didn't really, I don't know how deep if you got into looking at it, but we've, I'm bringing in, I was going to bring in a band and I probably still will, uh, the Moonshine Bandit that we've had here during one of the events for, um, Sun, not Sun and Surf, but Bikers at the Beach. And, um, they just sold out, uh, two nights down at the Jupiter Truck Stop down in Portland and sold out all the hotels down there. And once again, you're talking heads in beds, you're talking Sun and Surf, Bikers at the Beach. There was no rooms available here during those times. And that's why, that's why Bush here called me in to, to help out with some shows and, and that, uh, for August twenty-third, I have the, uh, uh, Moonshine Bandit Show, and on the twenty-fourth, we were going to do, I think you called it one music festival. Woodstock Revisited, and we actually had Janis Joplin's band, Big Brother and the Holy Company coming in. We had, uh, uh, Country Joe and the Fishes band, and then Hendrix is dead, so we were going to bring in Randy Hansen to do the number one tribute to Randy Hansen in the world. And I just want to, just want to ask why that wasn't considered.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I have two comments. One, Rich's opening comments about the fact that this year is a down year starting off for the hotels and the collection of funds. So, as much as the hotel community, if we can support all of your events, please get to us, get your posters out, anything you can do to help you to be successful, don't ask us to be successful. I just wanted to say that because, again, this year is starting off slow. Uh, in terms of, I, I want to make a comment about the Lions Club equipment. I'm intrigued when I go to other communities. So for example, uh, there's a park in Olympia. Their playground equipment is a sunken ship in sand. And I think to myself, wow, that's a community that puts into their children and brings out the creativeness of what children could, you know, pretend and become and other than just slides and swings and things like that. So I hope that they could grow their program into something like that where they have a sunken ship or they have a pirate ship for the kids to play on and really be able to feed their creativity. And I just think it brings a more vibrancy to the community. So I wish them good luck.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, both have public comment.
Thank you.
Any other recommendations from you three?
Um. I'd like to answer his question as to why I didn't motion for it, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um. I didn't motion for it because it's in August and I have said in public comment multiple times, um, that I really think that people need to bring off-season events. And, um, before I was sitting here and that, uh, we really need to focus on the shoulder season. And it was the second event from the same company and they, the same company had also put in for New Year's Eve and I thought that New Year's Eve would be more appropriate. And so that's why I refrained from making any sort of motion. Um, in that comment to you, I would like to stress for everyone listening, the shoulder season, so non-Memorial Day to Labor Day is when hotels really struggle. So if, if you have an event that is not in shoulder season, then it's going to be hard for me in the, the fall to, to be real excited about funding a lot of money for things that are in summer. And for me personally, I would like to see some more realistic asks by anyone putting forward applications with the understanding that it's supposed to be seed money. In the multiple years I've been going to LTAC, I've heard many times huge awards being made to various different organizations and with the disclosure that it's, you're supposed to become self-sufficient, you're supposed to become seed money. Um, and it, it doesn't seem to really happen. And so I, I really think that we need to refine our practices and I'm appreciative of having a board that is going to try and do that.
My answer, so, we were trying to be in off-season with that one. There was no hotel state, you know, convention center space open.
Well, maybe you could plan it for next year then.
There was, but it was like three or four weeks before New Year's Eve then, you just couldn't do it. That's the reason why we picked August.
Mary, do you have any, uh, closing thoughts?
Uh, no, I'm good.
There are any things you'd like to add? What's our next step here? Do we need to do an official?
Uh, so I, I'll, I'll read it since I wrote it down and then, um, so this is going to be under new business and this will be the official recommendation uh, to council and I'll just read it off and one of you could say, I motion. We'll just make it that easy. Uh, recommend to award seventy-four hundred to Hyatt Pan, uh, reunion, ten thousand to North Beach Independent Media New Year's Eve, ninety-five thousand to the convention center, five thousand thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to the Lions Club, seventy thousand dollars to the marketing coalition, five thousand thirty-five ninety-four to the Parks and Conservation. Right. Eight thousand to Rogue Wrestling and two thousand five hundred to the VFW, which is a total of two hundred and two thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Is there a motion?
I motion that we proceed with recommending that to council.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate everybody's time and I appreciate all the applicants. Sorry that it wasn't perfect for everyone. Never is, but we will continue to try to work hard. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.